Good evening. I'd like to call the July 24, 2012, Long Island City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley, Finley, Levison, Somori, Santos, Witt.
Present.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If the council will indulge with the tragic events of last, on the 20th, I'd like to see if we, I'd like to advocate a moment of silence for those that lost their lives and everyone affected by the shooting and a roar.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing on items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard on any items at the end of the meeting. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. On ordinance 2012-52, which I believe is Consent Item B, the accompanying exhibit has been changed to reflect, the ordinance and the exhibit have both been changed to reflect an adoption date of August 7 rather than the 14th, and there should be copies of that at your, at your agenda, at your codians. It's the only change in there. There was nothing substantive other than that.
Is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor. I have a couple of items. The first is Chris Huffer, who's here to update on the alleyscape project.
All right, great.
Thank you, Harold. Mayor Coombs and members of council, Chris Huffer, Public Works and Natural Resources, thank you for the opportunity to bring you a quick update on the alley project. The project is moving forward and on schedule at this point. In the last few weeks, though, we've been working the 500 block and as you kind of expect in a project of this nature, where we're working in a confined space of the alley with several utilities, we've had the unfortunate events of hitting a few utility services and putting adjacent properties out of service for a period of time. We've unfortunately impacted 520 Main Street most significantly by hitting their water service as well as hitting an unmarked gas line that was abandoned but still attached to the main, right adjacent to their building, causing evacuation for a short period of time. And then we've also hit two communication lines out there, one to 515 Kimbark and the other to 520 Main. We've been working diligently when those happen to try and correct them as quickly as possible. The utilities fortunately have been fairly responsive to us and we've been working with the LDDA as well as ETS here at the city to provide temporary Wi-Fi for those companies when their communications were out. None of the services have ever been out for more than 24 hours, and most of them being corrected within one to two hours. So, we are working with our contractor at this point in time, trying to put in a few safety procedures to make sure that things like this are to a minimum in the future. Like I said, with working in the alley, it's been confined and with a lot of utilities running through there, we can't say that we will not hit anything else, but working very carefully to not have that happen again. With that being said, our contractor is doing a good job moving through the project. In the 400 block, they've been able to install additional fencing and landscaping in that area. We've opened up the breezeway so that the parking lot, the alley, and the breezeway are all open to traffic and pedestrians at this point in time. There are a few things still outstanding there. We've got the light poles and banner poles that are being manufactured at this point in time, and those should be installed hopefully at the beginning of September. Let's see. The overhead lines and the electrical poles are still up. We're working with LPC as well as Comcast and CenturyLink at this point to try and get those down as soon as possible. They're preliminarily scheduled to come out the first week of September as well, and we're pushing for that date because the DDA is trying to set up an event in the 400 parking lot for the first week of September as well. On the 500 block, the contractor has opened up the sidewalk on Fifth Avenue, so there's no longer a closure there. Pedestrians can walk on the north side of Fifth Avenue now, and we are looking at opening the breezeway at Main Street either this Friday or early next week to reinstate the entries for the businesses on either side. They've been using temporary, temporary doors on Main Street at this point in time, so the Seven West Main doors will be open, as well as Colorado Estuar and Dire Realty will be open early next week. One of the bigger items that we've been discussing with the DDA, we are looking, or we are going to move up the construction of the 300 parking lot starting next week. In talking with the DDA and seeing the progress that we've been making throughout the project, we didn't want to be, or have any interference from bad weather at the end of the project, trying to get that parking lot closed up and ready for businesses around the holiday season, so we've moved that up in the schedule. The opening of the 200 public parking lot has helped us out greatly with that, which I believe has been open now for a couple of weeks, or about a week. That gives options for people that normally park in that 300 lot, another place to park. We're looking at taking approximately four weeks to complete the reconstruction of the 300 lot, at which time we'd be completing the 500 lot as well, the 500 block, and moving construction of the alley down to the 300 block at the beginning of September. We will not have the parking lot and the alley closed completely at the same time in the 300 block. We'll be taking the approximately western third of the parking lot for construction of the alley, which is scheduled to be completed before October 30th. So with that, if you have any questions, I think we'll have to answer.
I have a quick question. Does the city have to compensate the businesses when they impact their business? You know, if they're, you know, out for a day, or is their insurance covered, or, you know?
Mayor Coombs, there is not, the businesses that are impacted can make a claim to risk if they so desire. We've been trying to accommodate them as best we can, obviously with the Wi-Fi. We've been trying to reimburse them for expenses that they've had to put out for upgrades and that kind of thing to their systems, but to date, we haven't received any claims to risk.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, Mayor Council. There has been some questions regarding the restructuring that I've recently announced to the organization and provided the council with information on. In addition, I think there's been some questions in terms of whether or not council needed to act on that related to the compensation plan. So, what I wanted to do in this report is actually go over that information with the city council regarding the restructuring, and then let Eugene talk about the legal aspects associated with that and what action council does or does not need to take in this scenario. As I talked about the restructuring, I've talked about a number of issues that I wanted to work on with regard to the organization. Some don't directly have impact that, but do have a part in it. Wanted to work on really a commitment to the organization and really understand that we definitely accomplish more and we feel a sense of belonging in the organization. I wanted to, I want to facilitate an operational plan for the organization that ties everything together. One of the things that I've seen is that we have a lot of strategic plans, and those strategic plans are not necessarily moving in concert with each other, and so we tend to be moving in different directions. I want to foster a nimble and flexible organization that allows us to move at a fast pace so we can satisfy the needs that we each have, the needs of the council, and more importantly, the needs of our residents, and frankly, create a new perspective that will challenge why we do things and how we do them, and engage the entire organization into completely evaluating the status quo, necessity for various policies, regulations, and just how we approach the world and what we look at. As I've done this, and I could go on more and more, actually, when we, when I announced this to the organization, we actually had folks in this room, and I think we had about 110, and then we also streamed it live to all of the departments. So, if they weren't able to make it, they could actually watch that speech, and I think that lasted about 45 minutes as part of that discussion. What I did was actually create, as I've indicated before, two Assistant City Manager positions, one that will focus on the external departments, which is community service, economic development, and then I also moved the airport in there because I think from an organization perspective and a community perspective, I think the airport has a lot of value in terms of economic development and the opportunities that it presents. So, I wanted to move it into that arena to try and change the focus a little bit. That position is a position that we're posting, and it'll be open and competitive. On the other side, I created an Assistant City Manager position that's going to focus on internal service departments, public information, finance, purchasing, rent shop, all of the departments that serve the entire organization. In that position, I actually took Sandy's Assistant to the City Manager position and converted it to an Assistant City Manager position. As I work these issues, one of the things that I really wanted to do in this is really push communication across the organization so that external is really actively working and internal and working so that internal understands that although they may not directly touch the citizens, they actually touch the citizens and making it more effective and efficient for the external department. So, we're kind of working on that. We also want to increase communication from top of the organization to the bottom, top to bottom, bottom to top, left to right. And I think these positions are really important in making that happen. Experience has taught me in this type of structure that it really helps with an organization, and frankly, has fundamentally allowed positions, one that will focus on the external departments, which is community service, economic development, and then I also moved the airport in there because I think from an organization perspective and a community perspective, I think the airport has a lot of value in terms of economic development and the opportunities that it presents. So I wanted to move it into that arena to try and change the focus a little bit. Um, that position is a position that we're posting, um, and it'll be open and competitive. On the other side, I created an assistant city manager position that's going to focus on internal service departments, public information, finance, purchasing, front shop, all of the departments that serve the entire organization. In that position, I actually took Sandy's assistant to the city manager position and converted it to an assistant city manager position. Um, as I work these issues, one of the things that I really wanted to do in this is really push communication across the organization, um, so that external is, is really actively working and internal and working so that internal understands that although they may not directly touch the citizens, they actually touch the citizens and they can, making it, uh, more effective and efficient for the external department. So we're kind of working on that. We also want to increase communication from top of the organization to the bot- top to bottom, bottom to top, left to right. And I think these positions are, are really important in making that, um, happen. Experience has taught me in this type of structure that it, it really helps with an organization and frankly has fundamentally, um, allowed, um, my previous organization to really have a lot of success, uh, in terms of how we manage the department, how we manage the budgets and what we can accomplish. In that, let me call another sheet. One of the things that I did say is that I did not want to use any new revenues in terms of funding this position, and so the way we're going to fund this position is utilizing existing revenue sources. So, um, when we look at that, we, we've benched, it will be a management 10 position, and then we will, in Sandy's position, there's an ATM offset, uh, that, that helps a part of that, and that comes from the internal service funds. Um, in addition, um, we take her existing salary because that's not lost, and so that brings it down to, um, a need of about 86,000 when we take those two issues into account. Then we're looking at, um, we're taking a vacant position that exists within the organization as we retool some other areas, and that drops it to 72,000. Then on top of that, um, we have put together some reductions in postage that we're looking at in terms of public information, um, some other savings that Sandy's developed and from the ETS department, um, and so that's about 75,000. Then on top of that, I've been working within the existing budgets of the organization to, uh, come up with, at this point, um, an additional 87,000 savings on top of what we need to fund the positions, and we'll be applying that to the rest of the budget as we continue in those discussions. So if there's any questions from council, I'll be happy to answer those questions. Um, if not, I'll turn that over to Eugene to talk about the more fundamental aspects of the process and, and what, and how we go through it.
I don't see any questions, so. Eugene?
Mayor and Council, Eugene May, City Attorney. So the question was whether or not, uh, council needs to amend the pay plan to add the assistant city manager position. Uh, under our personnel rules, 3.04, 0.090 regarding new positions, an amendment by the city council is required only if the classification or pay grade or pay range for the new position does not exist in the currently existing pay plan. Uh, clearly, management 10 and the pay range associated to that, um, do exist in the current pay plan, and so, uh, my opinion was that no council approval of the pay plan was needed to add the assistant city manager position to that pay grade. And be happy to take questions if anyone has one.
Councilmember Rip.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for taking the time to explain this to us, and, um, I've been impressed with how quickly you've been able to make real change in the organization, and I have full faith and confidence in your abilities, and we are very lucky to have you. So thanks, Harold.
Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, um, so I imagine when we get the, um, uh, as part of the budget, um, the, the pay, um, structure and all and everything, we will see a new position that we hadn't seen, um, with the job description before for assistant city manager, correct? So that'll be linked up step by step then.
Yes, ma'am, and we're also using, we're not adding headcount. We're also using an existing vacant headcount. We're not using the dollars associated with it, so we're using the existing headcount. So it's, it's not adding to the overall headcount of the organization.
So the, um, advertisement that I saw in the National League of Cities Nations Weekly Classified section is for the external?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, okay, just in case people ask, I'd like to be able to tell them.
Yeah. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Harold, no, um, just echoing what Katie said, you know, you've, when you came on, we all talked to you in interviews and everything else, and, uh, one thing that I stressed to you, um, was the potential of adding a, um, one or two assistant city managers. I thought it was important. I also thought that it was, um, a se- a succession plan in case, um, not that I wish anything ill on you, but if something were to happen, we have at least, uh, one or two additional, um, assistant city managers or, and/or director to be able to jump in. Not that I, I don't feel that any of the directors, uh, that we currently have can't jump in, but also to, uh, have that broad perspective of the entire organization. Sandy, congratulations. Um, I look forward to seeing who is being vetted or, um, being looked at for the external, um, assistant city manager. Um, and I think you've, I don't want to speak for the other members of council, but you've listened to what our concerns are, you, you've met with us individually, listened to what we thought about the organization, and apparently, um, uh, as I, as I told you at lunch today, we've given you the keys to the organization or the keys of the car. You know, it's, uh, it's yours. Um, we, we're the policymakers. We give you direction, we give Eugene direction. Um, and, uh, so far, the car's coming pretty, pretty well. Uh, I look forward to seeing what the budget's going to look like and, uh, seeing what the next, uh, several years under your guidance, uh, is going to bring. So thank you.
Thank you, Harold. All right, it's time for, uh, Public Invited Be Heard. The first person on the list is, uh, Jim Worth.
How you doing, Mayor? Council? Um, my name is Jim Worth, and I just had a couple of questions about-
Yep, can you please state your address, please?
Oh, 1604 Feltham Place, and that's Longmont. Um, I just had a couple of questions if we could get, like, some horseshoe pits added in a park somewhere, like existing or Dry Creek or something like that.
Which park?
Like Dry Creek Park. Cause, uh, I'm a member of the Colorado Horseshoe Pitchers Association, and there's leagues, like over in Boulder and Loveland and Fort Collins, and Longmont doesn't have any leagues, and I was just wondering if there's any way that we could get, like, sanctioned pits here and a park somewhere, or?
Um, Councilmember Santos?
It's just three minutes, so he's still got time.
Yeah, okay.
I mean-
This isn't interaction, I mean.
Yeah, it's, oh, well, it's, uh, it's, I think it'd be a great revenue for Longmont. Uh, it's, uh, it's, the league is like all over the United States, and they host world tournaments, and like next year, it's going to be in Utah, so, I mean, if there's any way that we could get some pits added to Longmont, so, just seeing if maybe that'd be a possibility.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you. Dale, could you talk to him? Or, oh, Kim's here. Hi, Kim, can you speak to him about that? Thanks.
All right, uh, next up is Jeff Thompson.
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Summer Street. Um, Mayor Coombs, uh, three things, and I'll try to make them quick. I sent you an email and I asked you, uh, if you would, um, uh, move the city council to release all of the tapes of executive sessions at which, um, the oil and gas regulation ordinance or that agreement with Top Oil, uh, was discussed in executive session. Now, I'm assuming that the agreement with Top Oil has been fully executed. If it hasn't, then I want you to do this when it is fully executed. But once the agreement is in place and we've got the ordinance in place, uh, I don't see why the council could have any legitimate, um, reason not to let the public, uh, see everything, uh, in those executive sessions. Um, you said you weren't familiar with the procedure. Well, the council would have to, uh, vote to release all those tapes. Um, frankly, I don't think the council wants to release those tapes because I think that they will show that you were advised by your attorneys that that ordinance, um, is preempted, that it's basically a phony ordinance. Um, you also said, in response to my, uh, email, you said, "I'm sorry that you don't like our new city regulations. Would you have preferred no regulations or regulations that would not stand up in court?" Well, I think we now know what the campaign is going to be on behalf of the city council to defeat this initiative. You're going to say the initiative wouldn't stand up, but the regulations that you passed will stand up, and I think that the tapes will show that you know that is not true. The only way we're going to have any meaningful regulation to, for example, protect our kids from getting cancer from these wells is by arguing for a modification of the law of preemption, either way. So would you please release the tapes? The other thing is, um, you're basically paying off, uh, Top Oil to not bring a lawsuit and expose the truth of what I just said to well over $2 million. You're, you're paying them off not to do that. Now, what I asked you also to do is please tell me where the funding is going to come from. Uh, really what I would like to see, and I think maybe at the next meeting, you should ask our city manager to bring you one of these supplemental appropriation requests so you can appropriate the funds. Uh, there's about, um, there's over 800, over $800,000 worth of cash that won't be paid out of royalty accounts. You've just got to come up with the cash, and if you're really serious about this agreement and this payoff to Top Oil, people would like to know, how much are you going to raid the open space fund for? How much are you going to raid the water fund for? And how much are you planning to raid the drainage fund for? The drainage fund is a joke because you don't have any money left in it.
Three minutes is up, thank you. Um, I think that's all on the list. Would someone else like to come up and speak? Yeah, he did.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm Strider Benston, 951 West 17th Avenue. Normally, I don't go into analyzing or psychologizing, but, uh, we have such a tragedy in our face here in Colorado, I would like to make a comment about it. Um, pertaining to the shooter a few days ago, early reports are unanimous that he was never terribly abused in any realm of life and had no history of seriously acting out some entertainments, but he chose to adopt the role and acted the persona of Joker. Is more than a clue, it is a message. And I quote a couple of things. I don't watch movies, but they showed an old one, uh, on TV a couple of nights ago, and I, and I, uh, took a couple of notes, and the Joker said to Batman, "You thought we could be decent men in an indecent time. Fair, the only fairness is chance, randomness. I, it's not about the money, it's about sending a message. I am an agent of chaos. I'm not a steamer. I try to show how pathetic their attempts to control things really are." Here you have a normal thoughtful kid viewing an unfair chaos in the way our society runs, and probably a target pushed him over the edge like failing that, uh, exam, but it wasn't terminal, he could have taken it again. But he views the ugliness, the violence of our entertainment media, the violence in our society, the 10, 11,000 people killed by guns every year in this country, the Supreme Court corruption, the blatant propaganda spin and flat-out lying that passes for political discussion in this country, and no way to counteract it because that's where the power and that's where the control of the media is. And he decided, "I'm an agent of chaos, I'm going to show you that you can't deal with your own problem." Now, I would like to compliment our city in a very difficult endeavor we've been through for the past year on the oil and gas regs, and a lot of passion on both sides, some people speaking falsely, but a lot of people speaking from their hearts, and I think the council members took this very seriously and tried to come up with a, uh, a stabilizing, uh, resolution that would give us a chance to protect home rule, to protect our homes, and also to balance the interplay of forces. And I know it's been difficult, I do not agree with all that was done or said, but I think our city really deserves and, and, uh, carries the honor of having done a good job on working on it. Thank you.
All right, um, I guess we're ready to start, uh, the ordinance on second reading.
Okay, your first item of business on second reading is ordinance 201250, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Parker annexation, which is generally located south of Third Avenue and west of Sunset Golf Course and zoning the property E2 Estate Residential, and Brian Schumacher has a presentation on that.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Brian Schumacher with Economic Development. We have a request this evening from Mr. Parker for approval of an annexation and concept plan and zoning for his property that's on south side of Third Avenue, a little bit west of Sunset Golf Course. Annexation consists of approximately four acres and includes, um, some adjacent alley and Third Avenue right-of-way. That's adjacent to Mr. Parker's property. Uh, property's currently vacant, and it does meet the state statutory requirements regarding annexation. Uh, requested zoning is E2, which is a state residential, which is consistent with the land use designation on the comprehensive plan, as well as, uh, zoning on surrounding properties. Uh, Mr. Parker's interested in constructing a home and several accessory storage buildings on the property for his family's personal use, in addition to a, uh, private vineyard and, and winery on the property. Um, as noted in the communication, the planning zoning commission did recommend approval of the request, uh, with a six to zero votes. I did want to bring to your attention a relatively minor issue, uh, that has come up, uh, since first reading that was brought to the applicant's and staff's attention by a neighbor, uh, of the annexation, and that is regarding a discrepancy in the, uh, legal description for the annexation. And the discrepancies is related to a, uh, vacation of a portion of Third Avenue and the alley right-of-way by Boulder County in 1997 that was required by a court order to address right-of-way and property line locations and building encroachments unrelated to Mr. Parker's property, but it's related to the right-of-way portion of the annexation. So the right-of-way vacation, uh, by Boulder County in 97 isn't reflected on the current, um, legal description that's part of the ordinance and the annexation map. We had hoped to have a revised legal, uh, description for tonight's meeting, uh, but unfortunately, the applicant surveyor wasn't able to review the discrepancy prior to this meeting. Um, the vacated right-of-way doesn't affect the boundary of Mr. Parker's property, but it does affect the Third Avenue and alley right-of-way boundaries that were being annexed with this property. And although the vacated area is relatively small, it's less than 700 square feet, we feel that we shouldn't move forward, uh, with the annexation tonight, uh, just to avoid annexing any portion of a vacated right-of-way that are part of a neighbor's property that's still an unincorporated Boulder County. So just for reference purposes on the maps that you have in your packet, um, and up north being this way, um, it's just a small portion, uh, where there's some, uh, the house encroaches into both the alley and the Third Avenue right-of-way area in this very northeast corner. So, um, staff is recommending that, uh, since, uh, this hearing was noticed to the zoning property owners, it's also, the property was also posted regarding the hearing, that council open the public hearing this evening for anyone wishing to address the council on this matter, and then we also recommend, and I believe Mr. Parker concurs, and he's here this evening if you have questions for him, that council postpone action on this item, uh, to the August 14th meeting, uh, so that Mr. Parker's surveyor can provide us with an updated legal and staff can provide council with a revised ordinance and annexation map and concept plan. So that concludes my remarks. I'd be happy to respond to any questions that council may have.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. So, um, is this suggestion that we table it, um, to a date certain, or, um, should we hold the hearing and then just say that we don't want to do, uh, just hold the hearing and then, um, set forth a, um, a date for the vote then?
That's what I would recommend, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I was clear.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I guess I'll, uh, open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Somers Street. The communication that the council received on this, um, says that the zoning of a state, some kind of estate zoning, is consistent with the, uh, low residential, um, planning designation in our comprehensive plan. And of course, um, consistency with our Longmont area comprehensive plan, which I never hear you talking about it, maybe you've repealed it by now, I don't know. Uh, at one time, it was considered the most important document after the city charter, but at any rate, um, low-density residential, um, is from four to six, um, dwelling units, not one. So the, I don't know anything about a state zoning, but the concept plan of having just one house where we could have, under our comprehensive plan, up to 24 houses on that property, um, there's, the consistency isn't there. And, and the reason I think this is so important is, um, man, when I go by that area, I just drool and wish I could afford to live in that area. Um, about a year ago, the city abandoned families looking for affordable housing by trashing its affordable housing program. And I don't think that's been replaced, even though I believe council member Samori, uh, promised us that he would come up with something even better. And if he's even tried to do that, um, I don't know about it. I have a feeling it's in bureaucratic purgatory at this point, and we'll, we'll never hear about it again. Uh, but it, that is so, uh, think of what Cotton Burden could do with that property. You know, if you want to, if you want to change the comprehensive plan, what you should do is allow townhouses there, uh, affordable townhouses. I mean, think of what Cotton Burn could do with that and for this city, um, think of, that would increase property tax revenues hugely over just one house for some rich guy. You know, I don't understand it. The, the reason I like that neighborhood so much is that it's walking distance to the golf course, which is the oldest public course in, in Colorado, and it's an easy walk and an even easier bike ride to what we're, to the downtown area, where we're trying to get all the restaurants and cultural attractions and everything else. And also, you don't need a car to get down here to the civic center. So, a, a prime piece of property, and you're going to turn it over just for one rich guy to live there? It's ridiculous.
Thanks.
Councilmember Santos. Does there anybody else like to speak on this item?
I was going to remain silent, but you kind of got my blood boiling. Um, Jane Brennan, 1950 Spruce Avenue. I have, um, property just east of theirs and of that annex area, and we love it there. The idea of putting a single-family home is, is perfect. Not because we see a lot of wildlife there, we, it's peaceful, we have a lot of foot traffic, and I think if you put townhouses in there, it's going to completely destroy one, you're going to run off all the, the wildlife that comes along the river. It's not, you know, it's not perfect, but the idea of, of adding more people, it would increase the crime, it would increase, I mean, the, the visual would go away. Even a, a single-family home there, we have no problem with it. In fact, we think it would be a, a really good addition to our neighborhood, and it's a very safe, quiet neighborhood right now. Um, it wouldn't impede our view, because it's supposed to be, I guess it's a one-level ranch home, um, from where we are, uh, we're, we're welcoming it. That's, I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does there anybody else like to speak?
Uh, my name is Bob Peck, 1935 Spruce Avenue, Longmont. Uh, I hadn't intended to say anything, but with all due respect to Mr. Thompson, 24 townhomes, not, not going to happen. The residents of the neighborhood have no problem with the plan as, as proposed. Uh, this has been studied for many years, and for someone who doesn't live in the neighborhood to stand here and try to talk you guys into putting 24 homes at the end of my block, I've lived there 35 years. I just want to, uh, if you were giving any thought to this, I would urge you not to do that. Uh, the whole neighborhood does not have a problem with it, and I just have one question that, that might be better spoken to Mr. Parker, but I, I would like a little better definition of what a private winery entails. But, uh, one home, not a problem. 24 townhomes or anything else, big problem. Thank you.
Is there anyone else I'd like to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Brian, I got a question for you. I wasn't aware, I think the first speaker mentioned that, that we own this property? I wasn't aware we owned this property.
Mayor and council, no, it's owned by Mr. Parker.
That's what I thought, so for us to, uh, apparently it's Mr. Parker's request to build this, build a house and have a, you know, private residence there.
That's correct.
So I don't think he is intending on building anything else beside his house and pretend whatever a private winery is.
That is correct, that is planned.
Just making sure. So, we need to probably wait till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is to bring this back up. The four, you guys want to go the 14th?
Wait till the 14th, uh, Mr. Parker and I will be out of town on the 7th.
Um, Mayor, I would move that we, uh, reschedule this item, ordinance 2012-50 to August 14th.
Councilmember Witt.
And thank you for the clarification, and I, I guess there was some misunderstanding about this property, that it is in fact a private property, and, uh, since it fits well within, uh, the, it's a residential home, and we do not confiscate property and turn it into low-income housing in this country, as far as I know. So, I'm going to support this.
All right, let's vote. Oh, councilmember Levison?
Yes, and I also, um, want to point out that in the, the history of this property, um, uh, going back that we were, um, provided with, there was, I can't, I, I don't think I'll get the date accurate, but, um, I recall, uh, 1994, there was a proposal for, um, a much denser use, and the neighborhood, um, strenuously, um, opposed having, um, density that may have been, uh, twice what the ambient depth, density was in the neighborhood, and, um, it, it was agreed, uh, by the, uh, I, I don't know, I don't remember if it was a planning and zoning decision, I think it was, that, that that zoning would not, uh, having that dense housing would not fit well with the neighborhood. So I just wanted to point that out, that, um, you know, when that, that, uh, level of density was requested by a developer, it was, um, deemed, um, not a good fit for the neighborhood, and, um, it looks like, um, what it's ended up with is the fit that the neighborhood, it, you know, is not opposing at this point, is, um, an estate-sized, um, lot with a single-family home. I just wanted to point that out for the record.
All right, let's vote. It passes 6 to 0 with councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is consent agenda. 9A is to, ordinance 2012-51, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012. Public hearing in second reading is scheduled for August 7th. Second item, 9B is 2000, is ordinance 2012-52, which amends the 2012-2016 capital improvement program, and the public hearing second reading for that is scheduled for August 7th. Item 9C is ordinance 2012-53, bill for an ordinance authorizing the Longmont urban authority to ex, urban authority to exercise the power of eminent domain for non-fee interests in accordance with section 7.8 of the Twin Peaks Mall area urban renewal plan. Public hearing in second reading is scheduled for August 7th. Item 9D is resolution R 2012-55, a resolution of the city of Longmont approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for grant funding for a pedestrian underpass on State Highway 119. Item 9E is resolution 2012-56, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Genesis program. Item 9F is resolution 2012-57, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its prevention and intervention program. And item 9G is accept the staff analysis report on the proposed service plan for the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District and direct the city manager to schedule a public hearing on the proposed service plan. And, uh, Mayor Coombs, staff would like to pull item 9C for a brief presentation.
All right. Councilmember Santos?
If there aren't any others, I would like to move the consent agenda minus 9C.
All right, let's vote. All right, that motion passes 6 to 0 with councilmember Bagley absent.
I think Brad Power is ready to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Brad Power and the director of the Economic Development Department. And I just wanted to have a brief clarification for item C, which is related to authorizing the, uh, use of eminent domain for certain non-fee, uh, real estate interests at, uh, Twin Peaks Mall to implement, uh, that urban renewal plan. Uh, in the back of the ordinance is a written description of the parcels that would be involved, and we thought it would be helpful to clarify for both you and the community to specify which parcels, uh, in the Twin Peaks area that we are speaking of that would be potentially impacted by this ordinance. I don't have a map at my disposal, if you want one for second reading, we could certainly provide, uh, you with that, but in terms of a verbal description, uh, if you could put you, put in your mind's eye the ring road around, uh, Twin Peaks Mall, so if you think about what the common area, the characteristics of Twin Peaks Mall would be, that is the area that we are speaking of, and there is additional parcel that's owned by New Martin Merrill in the southwest portion of the site, which is currently a vacant building. So I just wanted to clarify the fact that, um, that's the physical area that we're, uh, speaking of, that's in the, uh, that's in the ordinance. And the last thing I will say is just to clarify, um, that we are not talking about the physical property acquisition, we're talking about authorizing, um, certain other, uh, so-called non-fee interests, uh, in the property that would be subject to the ordinance. We're also not asking you this evening, obviously, just to enter into a specific action, this would authorize it in terms of the urban renewal plan implementation.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to move 9C.
All right. Oh, councilmember Finley?
I just had, uh, a correction on page number two, um, line number six, uh, after the comma, it says, "And," that it will be in furtherance of a public use. That it is, needs a spacing between, just a little thing, need to be fixed.
Thank you, Bonnie. All right, let's vote. It passes 6 to 0 with councilmember Bagley absent.
There are no additional items on your agenda.
Wow. Well, next is, uh, final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak, council, at this time?
1616 Somers Street. I just heard something. So, in, so, such evidence of incredible ignorance about our annexation project, process by council members who have been council members long enough to know better. I never said that that property annex was, um, owned by the city, that's ridiculous. The way the process works is if somebody wants cities, if somebody lives outside the city limits and they want city services for their property, they have to ask the city for annexation. And it's a condition of annexation, if we're going to provide city services, uh, that they conform with our plans. I, I mentioned, um, you know, what is the status of the comprehensive plan? Because the comprehensive plan that I knew, uh, said in the introductory paragraphs, that it was second only to the city charter in importance. And I think that the extreme right-wing members of this council are part of a national movement to do away with any sort of city planning. And I'm shocked that Sarah Levison is against city planning, and that, you know, and that she would go along with something like that.
You can just address the council. Go ahead.
Well, I'm shocked that a member of this council, uh, that, that people thought, um, wanted some sort of city planning, uh, would say that just a few neighbors could override the comprehensive plan. I mean, I think that that's probably been designated, planned for low-density residential, and that's not 24 townhomes, that's 24, up to 20, 16 to 24, single-family dwellings. Uh, and you should all know that, but you don't. Um, uh, an incredible amount of effort goes, went into the comprehensive plan. We went through this back in 2003 and approved it in 2004, and now, according to the plan, we should be doing a complete kind of revision of the comprehensive plan, and this council's not doing anything. It, it's just forgotten about planning. There is no city planning going on now. You know, you're supposed to be the leader of this city, and I wish you, you'd do something about that. Uh, I mean, at least acknowledge that the annexation was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but then say something like, "But we still believe in the planning process."
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, I'm going to close, the final call, public invited to be heard. Uh, it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Witt?
I wanted to say thank you to Longmont Power for, um, hosting, uh, some council members and the mayor for going up to the, um, CR Wind Farm and also the, uh, Rawhide Energy Facility. It's, uh, one of the great things about living in Longmont is our, uh, very reasonable power rates, and we really appreciate Longmont Power and Communications for, uh, taking the time to make sure that we all, uh, know where our energy is coming from. Uh, note, it is Boulder County Fair Parade this coming Saturday, and it's going to be a great time. We are, council, we need to have a discussion about whether or not we want to, uh, participate this time around. Shall we, uh, just by a, a finger, who's planning to be there? Just a finger.
I thought we were riding on horseback this year.
I, yes, okay. So, um, we do have a line on something to ride upon, it's not a horse, though. So...
It's got horsepower.
But it's got some horsepower to it. So, uh, everybody who's thinking about going to the Boulder County Fair Parade, you really should, because you should see what, what we will be riding. So, uh, we'll see you then.
Councilmember Santos?
Be afraid, be very afraid. Um, I'd like to also remind folks that, uh, concert on Friday night, Fourth and Main, also the Coloradans are having their 42nd annual anniversary, uh, shine and show this Sunday. The cruise night is Saturday, um, so lots going on here in Longmont, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Um, it's, it's always a nice turnout to see the cars on Saturday night, um, so I look forward to, uh, seeing that and also seeing the show and shine on Sunday. So I look forward to seeing that and also seeing the show and shine on Sunday. I'd also be remiss if I would, would not fail to mention that 14 years ago today Detective John Gibson and Officer J.J. Chestnut saved many lives in the United States Capitol in 1998 on this date. One of those was my own life. 14 years ago, it still kind of burns. Both men were laid in honor in the rotunda of the U.S. Capitol. And both men, J.J. was an Air Force veteran, but both men were interred in Arlington National Cemetery. My thoughts and thanks, which is too small a word, go out to each of those men's families. So thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have some questions for you, Jean. Since the petitions have been turned in, some questions have arisen that I hope we have answers for. Do we know what our legal liability limits are? Are there limits to what we can spend on lawsuits? And what, you know, just...
Not sure how to answer that question. There are the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act limits for liability. $150,000 per occurrence, total cap at $600,000.
So the most anybody could sue us for would be $50,000?
$150,000 for matters subject to the Governmental Immunity Act. If immunity is waived, then there would be no limits.
And what would cause it to be waived?
There are a number of exceptions under the Governmental Immunity Act. They have some for dangerous conditions at facilities. In this context, it would depend upon what sort of lawsuit they brought. I mean, governmental immunity generally applies when there are matters in tort or could be brought in tort.
For example, if someone who had mineral rights in the city sued because they could no longer exercise their right to those mineral rights, could they receive damages in excess of $150,000?
They probably could. I mean, it depends how they fashion their complaint and what the facts are and how the city is found liable.
So how would we fund that?
The usual practice is to direct the complaint over to risk management, and there's a loss fund which pays for defense costs and judgments.
And is there a limit on that?
Not any limit that I know of. I mean, a limit of...
It's a limitless fund. That's awesome.
That's not to say it's an unlimited fund, but there is no cap, as I know, of that would limit an award.
I think you know what I'm getting at. Should we have to use that fund, at what point would we have to find another source of revenue?
I spoke earlier to our finance director, Jim Golden. I believe the current balance is around 1.2 million? 1.36 million.
In a conversation today with several people who've had experience with lawsuits of this type, I was told that it would cost us at least $4 million a year to fund the litigation, the defense and litigation and potential, potential awards. What is the drop dead date for us to put something on the ballot to help us figure out how to fund that, should that actually be the case?
So the charter provides that, would that be city council preferring?
Yes.
They can refer ordinances by motion. And I understand from the city clerk, we need to get certified ballot measures to the Boulder County Clerk by September 7th. So I believe currently September 4th would be the last date, which is a regular session.
So we can do it by...
By motion.
Resolution rather than ordinance?
Rather than ordinance, yeah.
Okay. All right. Just to let everyone know, I want to get some more information on exactly what it would cost us to defend that initiative, should it pass, should the voters pass it, and then craft some kind of resolution so that we will have a way to potentially fund that legal, those legal fees. I'm working on one, but not ready to pull it out of my hat tonight because we don't have concrete numbers as to what that would cost. It's just several people's educated opinion. Also, I wanted to, of course, mention my business of the week, which this week is Jimmy John's. They have two locations in Longmont, one at 210 Ken Pratt Boulevard, the other at 2318 Seventeenth Avenue. Jimmy John's has delicious sandwiches, and they're very fast.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes. I just wanted to bring up a couple of items, do a little reporting out. I attended the National League of Cities, had a summer policy forum where they gathered together seven policy committees and the youth education and family council to consider some issues jointly and also to get some information. We had an excellent talk one morning by the economist from Wells Fargo, and I will forward that information to all of you. Some of the basic information that she provided was pretty amazing as far as where the economy is likely to go. She did touch on the issue of sequestration a little bit. And one thing that the fair committee, which I'm on, also talked about is cities being prepared for what possibly could happen under sequestration, so that we know what our exposure is, frankly. And one item that we funded tonight that would be, well, several items tonight that we passed on first reading that would be affected, I think Safe Routes to School would disappear, so that $74,000 grant that we saw tonight in our packet and pass would no longer be available. There could be some related transportation funds, certainly HUD and Home and CDBG. There can be a pretty lengthy list of items that we may not know about. And in fact, there is no best guess right now for what could be cut, what will be cut, and it is not likely that there would be any action taken before the end of the year, even following the election in November. Best guess is we might have to look through till January or beyond, which would be very destabilizing for our programs if in January or February we got the news that money that we had budgeted for suddenly disappears. And I think we need to maybe have conversation about that at a study session, or I will send all the information that I get and pass it along. But it's a very serious issue that not many people are talking about, and the advice was your communities need to start talking about it, because it's going to happen one way or another. The other issue that was discussed was the looming crisis in public pension fund strength. And, you know, I think we'll be looking at our, we've seen some financial information, but I just want to make sure that we do pay attention to that item as well. And on a bright note, there was supposed to be a hearing today on the recouping of sales tax by local entities. And from the information NLC staff gave us last week, they didn't think it would actually get a hearing in committee for a very long time. So I don't know what the result of the hearing was, but we're very hopeful that there will be some movement on it. And that would make a huge difference if the city of Longmont would be able to collect sales tax owed us. It's not a new tax, it's tax that was owed, but we have not collected from internet sales. That would provide a significant boost to our revenue in our general fund. So if we have to have any opportunity to lobby on this item, I think that, you know, if anybody on the council sees any of our Congress congressional delegation anywhere this summer, please mention that, because that could actually save us. There'll be some other items coming up, and I'll bring things as I get them with some additional updates. So it was a very interesting meeting, and one other thing we had an opportunity to see is the new convention center that's being built in Nashville, which is pretty, it's huge. It's bigger than Denver, it's probably, I don't know, it's bigger than anything. It's a phenomenal site and hundreds of millions of dollars, and a very interesting way that things are being paid for. Essentially, if you're a tourist, you'll be paying for an opportunity to not be at that convention center, even if you're just visiting family members. So pretty interesting financing mechanisms, but they're coming in very successfully under budget. And it might be a future National League of Cities meeting will be hosted in Nashville due to the new convention.
All right, I'd like to just touch on a couple of things. I would like to say that I agree with Katie. It was really interesting to go up and see the wind farm and the power plant and see also why, you know, wind isn't the total solution. It's a great technology, but, you know, we saw on one of the hottest days of the year, the wind wasn't blowing a breath, and that's when we need our peaks. So wind is great, but it's not the total answer. And I guess the other thing is, I just got done with a three-day weekend fundraiser for Children's Hospital up at Copper Mountain, and about 15 people of our 20-member team was from Longmont, and we raised about $20,000 or about $1,000 per person. And I'm just really proud of this community and how they always pitch in and work hard, and it's fun to be a part of something like that. That's it for me. City manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mayor, council. As we were preparing the agenda for next week, we only had one item, and the item was not time-sensitive. And so from a staff perspective, there is really not a need for a study session on the 31st. So unless council has something to add to it, we'd recommend that the mayor cancel that study session.
All right. I'm primed with it. Shall we, yeah, let's vote on that. The motion is to cancel the study session on the 31st. Can I have a second? All right, let's vote. Okay, that, Alex? Okay. It passes 5 to 1 with Councilmember Samori dissenting and Councilmember Bagley absent.
We have one more issue, Mayor, council. When we discussed canceling meetings, the August 14th meeting was canceled, but then we actually had to reschedule that meeting because of budget issues. Apparently, it is not showing up. It shows as canceled on the council calendar, but we will still need the meeting on August 14th. Not canceled.
Okay.
No more comments.
So can that be fixed on our calendars, or we just... Thank you. City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. All right, this meeting is adjourned.